Good evening. This is the April 6, 2017 Newmarket School Board meeting at 7:00. And I'll call the meeting to order. We're going to start with the pledge of allegiance. Julia, if you would lead us in that, I would appreciate it.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving to, we just had a non-public session to discuss personnel and student matters. Now we're in the regular meeting. And we'll open the floor to public comments. Not a lot of people here, so we'll leave it open for 15 more seconds. And the public comment is closed for this evening. Please come if you have comments for us. Julia, if you could do your report and the calendar, well, we'll do the calendar second. If you could give your report, that would be great.
Sure. There's a teacher workshop on the 12th resulting in a half day for students. April for education is going to be the 24th through the 28th. Sports softball's first game is going to be Tuesday, April 11th, away at PCA. Baseball's first game is Monday, the 10th, yeah, okay, away against PCA as well. Tracks' first meet has been moved to the 11th, which is also the Tuesday, at Mullenboro because of the snow that they had up there, so, yeah. National Honor Society will be hosting Mr. Newmarket on Friday, April 14th at 7:00 in the gymnasium.
Oh, dear.
All right.
It was, it was-
What's Mr. Newmarket?
It's like a male pageant show.
Oh!
It's very funny. I think someone last year did a description of trees for their talent. And it was hilarious, and someone wrote a poem, and it was, you know-
So who participates in this?
Uh, the students.
Other than trees? Oh, students!
Students.
Oh, okay.
I would probably guess that Mittel McKinney will probably be doing it.
So, a little more.
Um, so they have different categories, and the students, they, uh, they register. And then I event, there's like seven things, I think, that they go through. They have like-
Fashion.
Fashion, talent, how well do you know your date? It's, it's, yeah.
Okay.
Because they bring a date.
Now, who judges the contest?
Teachers.
And volunteers from the audience as well.
Oh.
Some people get suckered in.
Is it a fundraiser?
Sounds like the voice of experience here.
It is probably the funniest thing.
It's the fundraiser for the National Honor Society.
Yeah, and it's, oh, I thought, is it a fundraiser? It's funny.
Sorry.
It's also funny. It's-
Hilarious.
It's hilarious.
Oh, yeah.
It's just silly.
What time is it?
At 7:00.
On what day?
April 14th. It's a Friday. It's very funny.
You guarantee it?
I hope it's very funny. It was funny last year.
I will say the senior class, right now, is pretty hilarious.
Uh, also, the Drama Club's production of Meet the Creeps is tomorrow at 7:00. And Saturday at noon and 7:00. That'll be fun. And stressful. Okay. Third quarter is going to end on April 14th. Junior parent night is going to be Monday, April 17th, at 6:00 in the cafeteria. For the elementary school, progress reports go home tomorrow, April 7th. And there's going to be a kindergarten field trip tomorrow as well to the New England Aquarium.
Excellent. Thank you, Julia. Anything else? I know that Meredith, not Meredith, it would be Elizabeth. Elizabeth, Ingrid, and I are going to some school board association training on May 3rd. Ingrid's going to the new member training. Elizabeth and I are going to do the chair training that night, so just keep your eyes out, guys. If you want to do any training, just let Penny know, and she can sign you up. So we can keep those skills tuned up. Meredith, we'll go into your report if you would like.
Okay. So I have some financial pieces that I can update you on either now or when we get to facilities. What's your measure?
I think, since we're going to do a good stint on facilities, maybe keep it at that point.
Okay, perfect.
Since it seems to go hand in hand.
So Julia has hit a lot of the upcoming calendar events. I will say that we have, uh, we'll be bringing some students to you at the next meeting for recognition. I'm not at liberty to divulge what that might be for at the moment, but that's exciting. We also will be bringing to you our elementary school kitchen manager, who's been recognized as the kitchen manager of the year in New Hampshire. So we'll honor her at our next meeting as well. We have just finished our teacher evaluation process of all of our probationary teachers, so we'll be talking about that later in the meeting when we do nominations. But again, just so that the public understands, and as I know the board is aware, all of our probationary teachers are observed at least three times for an extended period of time during each school year by their administration. They receive feedback on those observations and then are participate in a summative evaluation process. They also write goals. They do a personal reflection. So, again, so the public understands this is work that we take very seriously as an administrative team. It's our, you know, providing feedback to our staff about the instruction of our students is our, probably beyond safety, probably our second highest responsibility. So that work often consumes a lot of administrative time and attention. And I certainly recognize that our administrators have been burning the candle, given our snow day situation, to make sure that those pieces were all completed on time. So I appreciate that. You also may be aware that we have a heating pump at the junior/senior high that failed. If you will recall, we had one fail right around February vacation. We replaced that one. In order to replace that one, that was pump three, we had to remove pump four in order to access, I might have them backwards. At any rate, we had to remove one in order to access the other one because of the way that our boiler room is, is laid out. We replaced that one, which meant that the syst, our boilers were offline during the period that we did that replacement, so that we could replace it. We had to drain the pipes, reset the system. So now our second of those four pumps has failed. The building, that pump wasn't working today. The building stayed at about 67 degrees in that area that was affected. It is not a quick process to get the replacement part. As you know, again, we're dealing with an older system. We're not sure if we're going to have it within the next week, so we're, we're working on that at the moment. Fortunately, temperatures are going to be fairly warm. So it may be possible to defer that replacement to the summer break, which would certainly be advantageous in that we wouldn't be bringing people in evenings and weekends to get that work done. So the cost to us would be less, but at the same time, it's still April in New Hampshire. So we want to make sure students are comfortable, and staff certainly. So that's the update on that piece. Just looking at my calendar. We have, um, that may be my hot list for the moment. Maybe I'll stop there.
So can I ask about the boiler? So now we have to get another year out of this.
We know that. That's part of our, well, so we have built in, we have capital reserves to address those needs. We know that's one of the risks that, that lies before us as we move through this facilities plan. Again, if something catastrophic happens and we can't bring it back online, we have the option ultimately to bring in a temporary boiler system if we can't repair it. And we believe the capital reserve funds, as well as the repair maintenance funds we have, would, would be able to help us in that case. I will just point out, we're also in the middle of student assessment season. Yesterday was school-wide SAT day in New Hampshire, so all juniors in Newmarket, as well as across the state of New Hampshire, took the SAT. We're also doing our smarter balanced assessment across the schools. So right now, that's heaviest at the elementary school, but we'll be transitioning to the middle school with that assessment next week as well. So it's a, it's a busy time. Our, our data manager is very busy. Our IT staff is very busy. Our administrators and support staff are very busy in, in providing the accommodations that students need. And then the third thing that, that I will mention to you is just that we still have a lot of uncertainty around state and federal funds budgetarily for the upcoming fiscal year. We've heard some reports that Title II A funding may be at zero for the next fiscal year, that we could see a 30% reduction in our Title I funding.
Can you put some names behind Title I?
So Title I is a reading and math intervention program that we provide at the elementary school. We provide services right now to about 40 students that those funds fund one full-time teaching position, as well as some tutorial hours. So a 30% reduction in that would have a pretty significant impact. It probably would cost us one of our two tutoring positions, or could, if that were to happen. So we'd, we'd need to have some conversations about-
In next year's budget.
How to proceed, in next year's budget. Our Title II A funds are, outside of the contracted collectively bargained dollars for professional development, are our district source of professional development funds. In total, that's about $40,000, $30,000 to $40,000 a year. So if we were to lose that, that's a pretty significant impact on our professional development work, which would again, cause us to need to sort of reexamine priorities. And as of right now, the state budget picture is, is still up in the air. You know, we, we hope to receive the same amount of adequacy, but there is still discussion about legislation that, for freedom savings accounts, which would, in the case of Newmarket, those dollars represent about $450,000, based on the students that we know who are homeschooled or attending private schools within Newmarket. So that, that could be another shortfall that would either have to be made up by taxpayers, or the state would have to find some other source of that funding. So I'm not trying to be doom and gloom, but I do have a responsibility to inform you that those are things that we are looking at and monitoring.
$600,000 from sort of, sort ofish, yeah.
How can we thank for these initiatives?
Um, well, the, so the, the Title II A and Title I are federally administered programs. And again, the federal budget for, for next year has not yet been determined. And as you know, the state, the state budget is, is still in development. They've just hit crossover, and so their finance, the finance committees are, are looking at all of the legislation, all of the proposals, and will be making those decisions, but oftentimes not until late June. We, what we've been told by the state is they don't expect to know the federal entitlement program allocation numbers until that time as well. So it just impacts us as we think about any employees on, in grant-funded positions, as we think about planning some of our summer work. We will need to be mindful of the fact that those funds may not be available to us, so.
Because a, a portion of the professional development stuff takes place over the summer, correct?
Correct, yep. Those funds become available to us typically. And typically, we begin to use those funds in July and August to do some of our professional development work with teachers.
So those are already worked into our budget for this fiscal year, or are we worried about next?
So it's for the 18, 17, 18 fiscal year.
Okay.
Fiscal year 18, next year.
Oh, okay, so we're-
Coming quickly.
The fiscal year that begins in July.
Yeah, it's July.
So, and I don't want it, this number, but this five, six hundred thousand, it's not there. As we started, it, it could not be there.
Right, yep.
We can't go to the taxpayers and say, "Give us some more money," somehow. We have to cut.
Well, we, we can't do that in the case of Title I and Title II A, because those are projected as revenues, right? So we don't have those additional revenues coming in. The expenditure side of our budget isn't, isn't projected to change, but if there's a shortfall in the state adequacy aid, which is what that $450,000 could be, so if that's a shortfall, that could have to be made up at the, locally. And so we would probably need to have some conversation about that.
But it's not a matter of going to the taxpayer and saying, "Give us more." It's a matter of reshuffling the deck. Well, you can't, you can't.
No, we can't go back to the taxpayers to ask for more.
No, but we have to, the next, the next season we'd have to.
Again, it just has, if that particular piece happens, there's a greater impact on the local taxpayer. And again, as we look at everything on the plate, that's something we certainly try to be mindful of. So we'd just be talking about priorities.
And I know in the past, Meredith, there's been, you know, not that it would take up the whole 30,000 to 40,000 for the professional development. I know there were some grants that were, are we seeking any of those this year? Or is that, Pat, time already passed?
So the, these are considered grants. They are considered, they're, they're known as the entitlement grants. Now, are there other grant opportunities? For example, you approved last month some funding from NCEP.
Right.
The Newmarket Community Education Partnership. They've given us some funds to support some professional development work, but they're not providing us with $30,000.
Exactly.
So certainly, we could look to other grants, but we won't be the only district in that position if these funds, funds go away. So again, it's, it's early in the process for all of these pieces, so I don't want to be alarmist, but I, but I want to be realistic that this is a possibility.
I think it's better to, to know about it as far, as early as possible, so we can address it in ways that we can proactively before it's an issue, rather than doing reactively.
And you send it to your representatives as well.
Well, it seems to happen all the time that their budgeting occurs after our budgeting, and, and anything on the revenue side or mandate side is always presented later date.
And, you know, I, we're used to that, right? That, that is the way that, you know, funding works in New Hampshire. And that's worked fairly well for many years. You know, we, we, we will make the adjustments as we need to, but, and certainly, when we have final information on these pieces, I'll come back to you with that. But you, I, I want you to know what I know at this point.
Are those hearings at the State House streamed or taped so that people can watch them and contact their, their legislators in an informed way?
Um, they're, you know, I don't know if they are all audio streamed, but some of them are. And I, I'm sorry that I don't know that. I think it depends on the rooms that the hearings are held in, and whether or not those are audio streamed. But all the information on the legislature and the current status of bills and the hearing information is all online, so that can be found. And certainly, if people have specific questions, I can do what I can to point them in the right direction.
Excellent. Anything else, Meredith?
No.
Um, if you guys would approve it, I would like to sort of modify the discussion items on the agenda. Right now, we have committee appointments, field trip, acceptance of a donation, school board member to the facilities director hiring committee, and then a draft of the charge for the building committee. And I'd sort of like to look at that first, because I think that'll shape some of the committee appointments, then go into that, and then go from there. So is that acceptable? Okay. So if we look at the school building committee, and I know that, Mike, I, I think you had some editorial changes maybe to it.
I was just scribbling on it. Nothing, nothing, nothing massive. I just, I would recommend that we put the number up to nine. And not that we have to have nine, but up to nine.
To give us a little flex, flexibility?
Yeah, I think so.
Nine public members? You're in that first section?
Yeah. Or, actually, no, I'm sorry, nine, to cons, I'm on the first fence. To consist of nine members total.
Oh.
And if my numbers, and so eight public members.
Okay.
To keep it consistent.
Okay. And basically, what, this is, you know, we're, we've dissolved the facilities committee at the last meeting, because we're now moving into the building phase of things. And so this gives us an overview of the roles and responsibilities for that committee moving forward. Mike, please say.
So I just want to thank him on, on the second full paragraph, beginning with non-voting members. And just to point a clarity, it, it, it mentions here that the facilities director, to be hired, I guess, will act as the owner's representative. Is that in addition to the clerk of works?
Correct.
Okay, acting as a, okay.
Yep.
Anything else that you guys have seen in there that you might want to amend or modify? You know, I, you know, as we've said before, the facilities committee did amazing work to get us to this point, and I know that this next committee will do the same. And I'm grateful for those that will sign on to help us get the buildings built, so. It's, it's good to have their purpose lined out. Anything else? Meredith, would it be helpful to read this for the public, or what do you think?
It's online, and it's with the board materials for this evening's meeting, so anyone should be able to do that.
It's a lengthy document.
It is a lengthy document.
You know, and, and basically, it delineates who the vote, who, why the committee is being created, who the members are going to be, who the non-voting members and the mem, the advisors are going to be, the purpose, and the guiding principles of the building committee.
And I would say, to be clear, it, if you're generally in, in agreement about it, we can make the editorial changes that have been suggested, and you don't need to approve it tonight. I think our goal was to have consensus tonight, so that you could request members, interested people to contact you who wanted to be part of this committee, so that they would understand the scope of the work. And then you can approve this and do the appointment at your next meeting.
Okay. Does that work? Okay. So we will take this under advisement for the next one, and then vote and approve the, the members on that point?
Did you want, so, we, we just all accept this?
Well, yeah. Are there any other changes, or are people in general comfortable with, with it as it stands? I made the change in the committee created at the top second line, from change that, from seven members to nine. And then in the voting members section, changed it from six public members to eight.
I think, and Kim, you said it, I think, I think it's important to emphasize that this committee isn't picking paint colors and tile shapes and, you know, door handle knobs and all that thing. When, that, that's not the purpose of this. It's, it's really, it's somewhat of a, to carry on sort of the foundation that was laid in the first phase of this, up, leading up to the bond vote. We, you know, we, we took pains to develop some very detailed educational specifications. And, and, you know, so the, the design philosophy should follow from that. That's what, that's what the committee would be keeping track of, as I understand it.
Yes.
Not, not the details.
An overall overarching 3,000 foot, 30,000 foot view, as opposed to the tile color, the paint color.
Right. And, and also, on the financial upfront, you know, making sure that, you know, we're, we are being frugal. There will most likely, during this project, be surprises behind those walls and choices that need to be made. And this, I would gather that this committee would act in an advisory capacity. That's also important. Their, their capacity is strictly advisory to us. So.
And I think, Mike, we set the, a good precedent with that, with the facilities committee.
Right.
You know, it was not, you, you guys got us to the point of, here are the options, and these are the reasons why, and then we ultimately decided which way we were going to go.
Yeah.
And it's going to be a similar situation with this building committee, as I see it, in terms of overarching global concepts.
And I think, I think this, it worked out well, I think, in that, in that phase, because a lot of these issues are of first impression for all of us. You know, we're not, we haven't necessarily built schools, or, you know, so it's good to have that, that broad input.
Yep. And I think it'll be good to have people with a, just like the facilities committee, a wide array of experiences and expertise that can give us insight that we may not have had.
Yep.
It's very beneficial.
The only recommendation I'd make is, I, I think it's important to define what owner's representative means, because it means different things to different peoples. And I think as we put roles and responsibilities in as it relates to the clerk of the works, and owners reps, and so forth, I can tell you from the business I'm in, it really varies, people's interpretation.
So funny you should mention that.
I, I can bring this certainly in a more complete form to the next meeting, but my definition of the owner's rep would be that they act as a liaison between the building committee, staff, other project team members. They provide and coordinate administrative support to the building committee. They coordinate processing of all change orders and requests for payment. And that, that's the role of the owner's rep.
That was what was really underlying my earlier question about, about the clerk of the works, because if you have two people doing this, it's like, is that, did you get that, or was that mine?
Right.
So.
The clerk of the works does the day-to-day.
Yeah.
They're, they're signing off, they're verifying, yes, this matches this. Then they submit that to our representative, who's going to make sure that all of those are initialed, that everything aligns, that the billing matches up. And they'll submit it to our financial office, where our business administrator will, again, confirm that it's been approved by our owner's rep, as well as the clerk of the works. And then it will be signed off, and then included in a packet for the board to ultimately approve.
How about, how about as and owner's representative, not the owner's representative, right? Because it sounds like we have two.
Yeah, it's a title.
It's, it's the owner's representative.
Well, so the facility director is the owner's representative, but, but also the clerk of the works is the owner?
So the clerk of the works is our onsite rep on a day-to-day basis?
No, I got, I got what they do, but I, but I, they're our representative.
But I would say that's the, that's the title, and it, it may help if I bring to you this roles and responsibilities guidance at the next meeting. It's a flow chart, in a sense.
It's a flow chart that shows the architect's responsibility, the clerk of the works' responsibility, the owner rep, and it's, it really, it really needs to be defined, or it's going to get very confusing.
Yeah. It, it's clear to me, because I've laid this all out.
Yeah, yeah.
And looked at some other samples, but you're right. It's, we should make that very clear. And, yeah, I guess in the back of my mind, the committee could help to do that, but, but certainly, we can bring that to the board.
And we're giving, this owner's rep is going to be a title in the contract with the contractor.
Clerk of the works.
Well, and, and the contractor, and the subcontractor.
Yep.
So it needs to be clear to them too, as to what this means, because it doesn't, it's not clear to me.
So we just need to firm those things up?
Well, I think-
And give a flow chart and delineate responsibilities?
Yeah, I mean, there's legal responsibility to the, to the owner's rep.
Right.
And what is the legal responsibility, and how are we binding them to that responsibility? What if they don't sign off on something? You know, it's, what's the flow chart through the architect? Is the, the architect signed off, I mean, I do this every day. Well, the architect signed off on it, but the owner's rep didn't.
Right.
Well, here's the chain of command. You go through the architect to the, whatever it is. I'm not, I don't know what it is.
No, it'll be the architect and construction manager will go through the clerk of the works, and then that will pass up to the owner's rep, who is then the liaison to the building committee and to me, essentially.
Different, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, probably.
The architect, generally, at, at least in our business, is at the top of the heap, because they're the ones that are ultimately signing off. The as-builds are, so.
They still do that, and that is part of that contract. But this is, yeah. I, I hear where you're coming from, and I will bring that to your next meeting, so that you can review it.
Okay. Any more questions about this until next time? All right. Going along with what Meredith suggested, I think we will delay the appointment of the school board reps to the building committee until we get this finalized with the next one. So we'll hold off on those. But to that end, I wanted to review the committee assignments for each of us going forward for the next year. The first one that I'd like to address is the school board budget committee representative. Who would be willing to fill that role?
I will fill that role.
Thank you, Elizabeth McKinney. And Elizabeth, we appreciate your support in this endeavor. The policy committee, if no one is opposed, I will take the lead on that one.
I'm sorry, we're-
The committee responsibilities, I mean, it should-
It was in your, uh, you probably, you may not have a fresh copy in tonight's packet. It was in last-
It was in last week's.
So what do we need to, what, what are we required to?
We, the ones that we need to do right now, we've already done the chair and the vice chair. We need to have-
Budget.
A representative on the building, a representative or two on the building committee.
That's not required, though.
Well, no, but it's-
But what is required?
Budget committee, policy, CECO School of Technology, staff development committee, teacher evaluation committee, and then the capital improvement.
CIP.
CIP.
Mm-hmm. And then there's some that are as needed. The health and, and benefits study, because that's one of the questions that we've spoken about before. We need to get with the staff to look at the benefits options for the district, and we would have a representative on that. That does not exist right now, so that'd be a future. Then, as needed, there would be a school delegate to the New Hampshire School Board Association.
That's a requirement.
It's an as-needed.
So give me the gotta-be's first, so.
Gotta-be, budget is gotta-be.
CIP.
CIP, policy.
Policy.
Um, school board rep to the CECO School of Technology. District, district staff development committee representative.
Yeah.
Teacher evaluation committee.
Yeah.
And then you, we got CIP, right?
Yep.
Okay. So those, those-
So there's one, two, three, four, five, six of them. So that means somebody's got to serve on two of these.
Yes.
Which is the school board.
Right. Which I am willing to do that, but we'll talk about that in a minute. So as of right now, Elizabeth has consented to doing the budget. I will do the policy. We need to talk a little bit about the, the rep to the CECO School of Technology. And Elizabeth has served in that capacity for some years, and I think has learned a great deal about SST and the benefits that our students receive as a part of that. So we could talk about that one. Would anyone be willing to do that?
Let us describe what that responsibility is. Meetings are once a month, typically Monday evenings at 5:00. Meetings last typically an hour, sometimes less. But your responsibility is to help, you're reviewing program changes that they might make as part of a board of directors from across the region. You are approving their budget ultimately as part of a board of directors across the region. And generally, being informed about the work of the CECO School of Technology as our regional career and program.
That they offer.
So that's once a month, for an hour?
Once a month, for an hour, during the school year.
Okay.
Um, and then the next one is the district staff development committee representative.
How frequent is that?
That's also about once a month during the school day.
And I was thinking, if no one would object, I would take that one, as well as the policy. And I was thinking if no one would object, I would take that one as well as the policy. Because I think it, it would.
How fre, what, how many, how often does that meet?
Once a month.
I have, and I've been on that, and we haven't met.
Are you talking teacher evaluation?
Yes, I'm sorry.
So.
So teacher evaluation is how frequent?
As Elizabeth just stated, it didn't meet for a period of time, it is beginning again.
Before that, we probably met every two weeks. And it could be.
Really?
Two to three hours, yeah.
Really, wow.
It's pretty intense.
And is that during the school day as well?
It can be.
Yeah.
We were first thing in the morning, I wasn't working then, so I could do it, it was after school.
So that's every, that's a, that's a big.
That could be a really big one. Could be a very busy one.
And then the last one is the capital improvement program. Chairperson, a committee member, representative from the school board.
And CIP is a half dozen meetings, three hours, three hours, two, three hours a meeting.
Four o'clock in the afternoon.
Yeah.
Approximately. Would anyone be willing to do the CIP?
Was there any, any talk of them maybe moving those meetings from four? I mean, I, I can't.
I had not heard that, but I did hear that they're going to change the format of the CIP to make it more effective and, and beneficial to the town. So I, I'm not sure, Al, when you've served on that, it used to be at a later time, correct? And then it moved to four?
Yeah, well, the whole thing has really changed a lot. The CIP is, I think it's going to change a lot this year.
Okay.
Where it's really, that's the word I'm hearing. Is that it's going to be a strategic planning organization, not one that's simply reviewing what people are doing now.
Okay.
So it's not whether you need a new fire truck this year, it's whether we need a full-time fire department in five years.
Okay, so really looking at.
So it's going to change, and the time could change as, as well. I don't think they've organized yet.
Okay.
To answer your question, I could do that one.
Okay. So Mike will do that one. And then for the teacher evaluation committee, basically we have, if I take the district staff rep, we need a teacher evaluation committee representative, which Elizabeth said could be a fairly frequent one. And then we need a rep for the Seacoast School of Technology.
Okay, the, the other, the other one that we've talked about, Mike, you and I have talked, and you and I have talked about this facilities thing. If it is only going to be one person from the school, from the school board, then I would do, certainly do something else.
Okay. I mean, I think that that's something we need to discuss, maybe as we get into looking at the whole flow of everything. Because it might make sense for you as the second to, and we can discuss this at, at now or a later date, to attend more of the meetings, so that if you are serving as the alternate and Mike has to step out for whatever reason, you are at a point where you are up to speed on what's going on, so you can just seamlessly go in, which would require, I would assume, greater attendance at the meetings.
And again, we've had that, that discussion. I think, my experience is that facilities meetings are so evolutionary.
Right.
That if you missed two meetings, you're so out of step with what's going on. So that's a judgment that the board needs to be, needs to make.
Right.
If the board decides that, I think an alternate is not a good decision.
Okay.
My, my own opinion. But if, if the board decides that one person on their, or if I'm not to be one, the one person on the facilities, I'd be glad to take another shot at CIP in the hopes that I could encourage them to change their schedule.
Okay.
I've done it for six years, it is like pointing, it's like going to the dentist.
Okay. So let's, let's, what about SST?
I'd, I'd be pleased to do that.
Or I could do that with, with my background in home economics and.
Yep, yep.
Ingrid, why don't we, if it's agreeable to the board, why don't we put Ingrid in? And maybe Ingrid, I mean, I don't want to overpower you your first year, because that might be a lot.
Were you thinking staff development or teacher evaluation?
Uh, yes. That was the other thing I was looking at there. And all of you would have a better idea in terms of time management. My scheduling is more flexible than anybody else's, I'm sure.
Right.
I would say of the two, in the short term, teacher evaluation will be more time-consuming of the two in the short term. Professional development is relatively, will be relatively short, but, and at regular intervals. Teacher evaluation is likely to be intense for, over the course of next year.
Oh, okay. So if you, if you did the teacher evaluation one, Ingrid, then I would stick with the staff development, and then you could do the monthly SST, would that work? So if we review it as of right now, and you guys can tell me if I'm, if I'm correct, we will address the building committee issue next time, so we'll table that for now. And then Elizabeth will be the school board member of the budget committee. I will be the, the person on the, the policy committee. Ingrid will be the rep to the Seacoast School of Technology. I will be the district staff development committee representative. Ingrid will be on the teacher evaluation committee, will be the teacher evaluation committee rep. And as of now, Al, I'll pencil you in for CIP, and we'll see how that all hashes out. Um, yes.
So give me yours, because I think you, I think you're too loaded.
I'm doing district staff development committee representative.
How frequent is that?
Once a month.
Once a month.
Once a month, okay.
And then policy, which.
And how, how often is that?
Which probably is going to be fairly.
Also about once a month.
About once a month, yeah.
That's always been the chair.
And then the other one?
Chair.
That's it.
Oh, okay.
That's it.
You're okay.
That's it. And one thing that I wanted to note is that, you know, on the list, there was the Seacoast Learning Collaborative position. That one doesn't seem to be needed at this point, so leaving it open. And then as the, the contracts are a year out, we don't need a team for the negotiations yet, that'll be in the next year. And then there was a thing for communications committee, and I'm not sure that that's necessary at this point, because I don't, I don't think we need a committee for it. I think what we'll do is, I'll ask Meredith to formulate a communication strategy for the district, be it some sort of consistent quarterly newsletter or something, and we input things in a, in a, in a school board corner. So that's sort of where that all is. Does anyone else have any questions about anything?
Bus committee, is that gone too?
I do not have bus committee.
I would say if that is needed, we can certainly activate that, but it's.
Bus committee.
It's not something that has come up in my tenure here, no.
So, and.
And mine either.
We will be on, on guard for the, the health and benefits study. If that comes up, we'll, we'll appoint someone at that time, and if the school board association opening is needed. Any questions about this?
Yes. Where is our agenda? Okay. Are you including continuing items under assignments?
Um, no.
Well, it looks like facilities and communication you just discussed.
Yes, but they were on the committee list.
Communication is in the committee.
It wa, it is on the list. It's a communications committee.
Well, let me ask the question differently. Shared services.
Yes.
Yes, we haven't done those.
We haven't, we're not there yet.
In terms of?
We'll come back to it.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah, yeah, we, yeah, I didn't skip.
Yep. Second on you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. We need to adopt these, I seek a motion to adopt these as listed.
So moved.
Second.
A motion, Mr. Zink, second for Mr. Kennison, any discussion on the appointments as listed? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous vote, Jen, I couldn't think of the word. All right, moving on. And Al, I think with the, I might move the, the appointment of the school board member to the hiring committee to shared services, does that make sense? Or should we talk about that now?
It's an action item, we can do it now.
All right, we'll talk about that now. So Al, we're going to move to shared services right now.
Ta-da.
As we know, there's been a process that started with Lisa coming on board as the shared finance director for the school in the town. That was a school hire. We are now at the point that the town is hiring a facilities director that will be shared, not second, third, shared services. And there is a hiring committee that is being formed for that purpose. Meredith, I know you're going to serve on it, and.
Sure, so I can just review for you, the board reviewed a job description. We did not approve that, because that, based on our discussions and the work of the shared services committee, that was intended to be a town hire. And we reviewed a draft of the MOU for that position. So the town administrators in the process of filling that position, it was advertised from the beginning of the month, last month, I believe. Application deadline was la, end of last week. So the town administrators in the process of screening those applications, forming the hiring committee to, to get that process underway. So it's, at the town administrators' request, that we have a school board member participate in that hiring committee.
Excellent. Is there anyone who's willing to serve on that committee? Al Zink. Do we need to approve Al's participation? I seek a motion to approve Al's participation in the hiring committee for the town facilities director.
So moved.
I'll second that.
On a motion from Mr. Kennison, second by Mrs. McK, Ms. McKinney, we accept the motion as listed, any discussion?
I think Al will do a great job.
Thank you. All of those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, Jen. Thank you all for serving on that committee. Please keep us posted. The next thing is the, some out-of-town field trips. And saw two now, and the first one is the Boston Children's Museum kindergarten field trip that's taking place this Friday, no, next Friday. They made a note, Al, the chaperone, I know you requested that last time.
Yes, we haven't amended the forms yet, but we will have them updated for the next school year.
Perfect. Any discussion about this, it's just a kindergarten trip to the Boston Children's Museum.
Correct.
I seek a motion to approve this out-of-state field trip.
So moved.
Second.
On a motion from Ms. Alberg, and a second from Ms. McKinney, to approve the kindergarten field trip to the Boston Children's Museum, is there any discussion?
Have a good time.
Yeah, okay. Go ahead.
Anything, Al?
What is the, that signature under nurse?
What is the signature under nurse?
Holy, but holy.
That's a medical signature, that's what that is.
That's a what?
A medical signature.
Looks like the ocean.
We will address her hand.
Let's put it on the.
All right, all those in favor of approving the motion as, as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, Jen. The second one is the fifth grade field trip to Boston on June 20th to review the extensive American history revolutionary train, revolution stuff they're learning right now. They'll do the Freedom Trail and all sorts of other things. It's sort of one of the culminating events of the fifth grade year.
I love that field trip.
I love that field trip.
I'm hoping to, I'm hoping to be chosen as one of the chaperones. I seek a motion to approve this fifth grade trip to Boston.
So moved.
Second.
On a motion from Mr. Zink and a second from Mr. Kennison, is there any discussion about this motion?
Have a good time.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, unanimously, Jen. The next thing on our agenda is an acceptance of a very interesting donation. It is from Jason Carey, who's the district technology operations manager. He went out to donorschoose.org to seek a grant for us for Ms. Sphinx's class for, who's a social studies teacher at the high school, for six Chromebook computers, to be put at the, six workstations to be used in her classroom. So the total value of the donation is $1,177.56.
Beautiful.
Wonderful.
All right, thank you, Jason, for going out and getting those funds for us.
Yeah, I believe Ms. Sphinx put the proposal together, but.
Excellent.
Mr. Carey obviously needs to approve any IT equipment that we're bringing into the district.
Excellent. Thank you both for being creative with the resources and financing, we appreciate that. I seek a motion to approve this donation amount.
So moved.
Second.
On a motion from Ms. McKinney and a second from Ms. Alberg, is there any discussion on this motion?
Thank you, thank you.
It's awesome. All those in favor of accepting this donation?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, excellent. It's amazing to see, between last week's meeting and this week's meeting, how much comes to the district by way of donations and how much impact it has on the students, it's, it's pretty cool. Now we're moving into the continuing items. Shared services, Meredith, you take the lead on that to give us an update?
Yes. Our finance director slash business administrator is continuing in that role. Completed the first full month of that work last week. So I, I think is beginning to feel like she's up to speed on where things stand with the town. Obviously, she had a leg up on the school side, having been in that role for a few months. And will be beginning the hiring process for the facilities director. I would expect that, you know, hopefully we'll have that person on board in the next month or two, which would be great as we move forward with the building process and, and as we head into the summertime, when we know our, our school facilities work increases significantly. So those are exciting pieces.
I can't help but take, put a plug in for the facilities director in this pump situation over at the high school. Because those are all things that should, should have been the preventive maintenance program, not waiting until they, they broke it. So I think we'll begin to see a lot of, a lot of those kinds of.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, these are, those pieces are not inexpensive. And I think, you know, as you've looked at replacing the facility and holding off on that over a decade, some of those pieces, it was, do we spend the money now, or are we spending the money later? So I think those, that cost benefit has been ongoing in this district, as you well know. But it will be so nice to be with, with the upgrades to the facilities and a multi-year, twenty-year maintenance plan laid out to be able to monitor our expenses, plan for our expenses as we move forward.
Because this has basically been a wing and a prayer, that this has even run.
But for example, who's dealing with the pump right now?
The head custodian, myself.
So, so that job.
Our building principal.
That job would be that person's.
Correct.
Which has a time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Time and expertise and everything else.
Yeah.
Moving on to facilities, Meredith, if you want to give a subdue about all that.
Sure, so next week, the architects will be here on Wednesday to meet with staff in both buildings as we begin to move into the schematic design process. Again, if the board approves the committee charge and appointment, makes the appointments to building committee at its next meeting, I would expect that we will be scheduling a building committee meeting for either late this month or early May.
Is the building committee the same as the facilities committee, or is that a different committee?
So facilities committee is now done.
So a building committee is made up of?
So that's what, that's what will be decided at our next meeting. But that will include members of the public, however many board members you choose, and with support from administration and.
Gotcha.
Building and district.
Yeah.
So that, that work is ongoing. I don't think there's much more to say.
Did you have any finance stuff?
Yes, let me update you, thank you.
There was lightning.
Yeah, we're getting a good little storm.
Just snow.
In the event of a power outage, please grab yourself.
Oh, dear.
So we received an update last week from the New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank that their thirty-year loan rates now for the June-July sale are projected to be at 3.75. So I feel good that we projected a worst-case scenario of four and a quarter.
Meredith.
Because that's a half percent savings off the top.
Oh, wonderful news.
Now, so again, that's a half percent down from what they told us previously. Their twenty-year rate is projected to be at three and a quarter. And again, we'll, we'll review those scenarios with you at subsequent meetings, and you can evaluate whether or not that makes any sense. Long-term level debt and level principal over the twenty years, I'm sorry, twenty-year was previously at three and a quarter. Now they're projecting twenty-year for level debt to be at 3.4 and level principal to be at 3.3. So the twenty-year rates have actually increased while the thirty-year rates have come down.
Did you quote the thirty-year rate?
Thirty-year rate of 3.75, which is a decrease of a half percent.
Yeah.
Twenty-year is an increase on level debt going from three and a quarter to. 20-year is an increase on level debt going from three and a quarter to 3.4 and on level principal from three and a quarter to 3.3 percent.
Isn't that amazing? Because the last meeting we had, it was the inverse relationship.
Correct.
The long-term was, isn't that odd?
So I, well, I think the projection for long-term was fairly conservative by the bond bank. They were projecting that to escalate at a faster rate than it did. But I think they were less conservative in their 20-year projections and those are the ones that have fluctuated. So yes, it is obviously the inverse of what we expected.
Because we had great discussions at the deliberative session about that relationship, which was scaring the pants off people. Wow, wonderful.
So on that front, the USDA rate, projected rate for this quarter, again, we submitted our application actually on Monday. So their rate is 3.375. We will know at the end of this month, I believe they find out on the 28th of April, whether or not as a whole that this program continues to be funded through continuing resolution. But the decision on our application could be a couple of months out. We won't know that for sure.
And we still have the opportunity with that to hold that and still?
So it's still in play.
Right.
But, but the timing of it could become problematic. Now again, based on the fact that the 30-year rates for the bond bank have come down so significantly, it's still advantageous, obviously, if the USDA funding comes through for us to pursue that. But if it doesn't, the picture is not as bleak as it was
Right.
a few months ago. Now, we also had had on the table the possibility of going out and selling our bond ourselves. We also had been putting together financial information. We worked with a financial advisor who's done a lot of work across the state of New Hampshire, who did sort of an analysis of our financials to determine whether or not the market would be favorable, more favorable for us to sell individually than to go through the bond bank. His conclusion is that it would not, that our bond rating as a community is not likely to be as high as the rate that we would get through the bond bank. So we are taking that off of the table at this board. My recommendation to you is that we take that off the table at this point and continue to complete our application for the bond bank, which we will be submitting tomorrow, actually, and await the results of the USDA decision.
So the commitment on the bond bank, when will we get a commitment?
So, so they are accepting applications now. Commitments are due in May. So we will need to be making the decision potentially. We may not have the USDA decision before we need to make the commitment with the bond bank. So that's a
And their quote now is going to be true in May or can it change?
No, the bond bank's quote is what they're anticipating for their June-July sale, which is when they
For sure.
have to have commitment from us.
So then we've got to weigh that against what do we think's going to happen?
With the USDA.
With the USDA.
Right.
With terms that are a little more favorable potentially. And, but the prepayment, is the prepayment penalty on the bond bank?
So the, yes and no. There is no prepayment penalty with the USDA. With the bond bank, they're, you can't prepay, but the bond bank itself typically, if the market is favorable, goes back out and refinances their bonds and we reap the benefit of that. So technically, we cannot prepay. But if in 10 years, when their bonds are callable, the market is more favorable than 3.75, they can refinance and we would receive the benefit.
So how do you evaluate that, that prepayment op, how do you, is there a value to do with?
So that, that's the next phase of the work that we're engaging with bond counsel and this financial advisor is to sort of, is to talk through those points. Again, it may be moot on April 28th if the continuing resolution isn't funded for the US Department of Agriculture. But we will, we will need to make that evaluation before the commitment is due to the bond bank, potentially. Now, we could hedge our bets and put in for, you know, the 45% that we would have to fund through the bond bank anyway. We could put in for just that amount and wait and see if USDA's funding is intact, hoping that we have some indication. And we could go back to the bond bank at a later date. Again, you're weighing the risk of how much are the interest rates likely to increase? So that's why we felt it was important to bring in this financial advisor, who is really, his full-time work is evaluating the markets. And again, he's done the work with a number of municipalities across the state of New Hampshire and has his pulse, I think, on, on the likelihood of all of these pieces.
Okay, so with the bond bank, if at the point where they would rework, we're still at the same term, 20 years or 30 years, whatever we decide to. It's just at a different rate.
Correct, correct, yeah. We can't renegotiate the term at that point.
So it's not, we will prepay, but it can reduce the cost.
Correct. So we expect at your next meeting, again, we won't know the USDA piece at that point, but we expect to be able to give you an update on bond bank and certainly the recommendations of the financial advisor and could potentially have that person meet with you, depending on what information we have at that point. We would invite.
This is nothing but great news.
It's good news.
It's great news.
And how do we, so how can we get it out there? I mean, obviously, it's in our minutes. Could we do some sort of announcement or do you just wait until the whole thing comes together?
I would say it's premature to do a large-scale announcement. I think, you know, I think it's certainly, we can all be very optimistic at this point. And it is great news that we're saving a half percent, you know, off the top in interest. But you have, you're still going to have some decisions to make in the next couple of meetings that after those are made, then I think it would be appropriate to do a larger scale.
I just had someone asking me yesterday.
So before we, so working backwards, what do you think, Meredith, is our drop dead deadline as a board to make this decision? I mean, roughly sometime in early May?
Early May. Your first meeting in May.
So on May 4th? We need to make that decision. So, you know, we discussed at the deliberative session, you know, allowing public input on this. So we may want to, we have, how many more meetings until then?
We have two. That would be the second meeting. And if we would, again, put this on the agenda for a meeting and if the financial advisor were coming, you know, there is an opportunity for public input at that point. And so this is a preliminary update so that we have the opportunity to do that.
And so for the public input to be meaningful, I think we need to, I guess, publish, if you will, the information ahead of time.
Right.
Because if I were to come into it and look at it, my head would spin. You know, if I had to comment on it right there, I'd probably want to chew on it for a little while.
Well, the other interesting concept, and I can't get, I can't get my head wrapped around it, but it's the future value of money. Because the last 10 years on the 30-year bond, the value of money is much less than it is in the first, and I can't get that upstairs. So if there's somebody that could explain future value of money, that would be, that would be, I don't know if it's the bond bank.
I mean, Mike, it might be helpful for us to disseminate the information using some of the communication channels that we've used in the past initially. The newsletter, distribution list, the black, all sorts of things to get the information out.
Website.
The website, all those things to get that information out and let people know that the discussion will take place on that, that May 4th meeting.
And to your point, we can certainly see if the financial advisor is able to join us for the meeting on April 20th. And if not, we can look at alternative dates that the board might be available for to have a public conversation on just that very topic of the financial considerations.
I don't know if the bond guy is, has that, I don't know.
The financial advisor?
I mean, do they have that ability to explain to us future value of money and?
I mean, with as much certainty as anyone else could explain it, I would say that would be the right person.
Because I know it's, I know it came up at the deliberative session a couple of times. I know it's still a pretty good subject of discussion that I have when I'm asked about it. I just, I just don't know.
Was there also, Meredith, I understood just in our, in our work that we've already done so far, some projects they'll have an interim financing to pay until the architect, until the bonding money comes in, is that?
Yeah, you're able to get through the bond bank with no fee. And the bond bank, that was the other piece of the news from the bond bank, is that there's no fee now to issue, for them to issue a bond. It's, you know, it's another upside.
Another $15,000?
Right, we had, yeah, we anticipated a $10,000 to $15,000 cost for that. So that, again, is great news for municipalities across the state who are looking at bonds. But, sorry, Mike, repeat your question.
No, I mean, I can't articulate it very well, but I, just some sort of, I understood there may be a gap in between.
Yes, sorry. Bond anticipation note is what they're called. And those are available at no cost through the bond bank. And whether we did USDA funding for part and bond bank funding for part or fully bond bank funding, we'd be able to draw a percentage of money from that at no fee prior to the sale in June or July. We may not even need it, but we have put in our application an intent to withdraw some funds so that we have a cash flow should that need arise.
And when would the monies be available?
Almost instantaneously from the sale. June or July.
Oh, June, July.
It's a June-July sale.
So you don't anticipate any significant receivable, payable, receivables?
Not, not significant, but again, we've set up to have that bond anticipation note should we receive it so that we can cover any cash flow gap.
I do have a question, it's kind of silly. But we could tap into that fund. Could we start the new furnace? Like, I know that's part of it, would that even be feasible?
So the challenge is that our current boiler room does not meet code. It will need to be demolished and replaced. And so best case would be to bring in some sort of temporary boiler because we'd still have to go, we still have to go through all the permitting and those pieces. So again, it's a great thought and we've played that out a little bit. And again, if we have a catastrophic failure, believe me, we'll be on the phone with our construction management team to talk about, you know, how do we adjust our phasing schedule in order to make that happen more quickly? But that is one of the earliest pieces right now in our phasing schedule. So I don't, I don't think we'd be able to get far ahead of it.
They'll be working on this this time next year.
Yeah, correct, yeah. Yay.
Thank you, Meredith, for that update. Very promising news for us all. And if the board approves, maybe Mike and Meredith and I can come up with some communication stuff to make sure we've got it out on the website in all areas for everybody. So we'll talk about that. Communication, we've just added a communication thing. We'll be communicating facilities information. Approval of the minutes. Are there any amendments to the minutes that anyone saw from the last meeting? We had public and non-public amendments from the last meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of March 20th, 2017.
I'll second that.
On a motion from Mr. Zink and a second from Ms. McKenney, is there any amendments or discussion in the minutes? Ingrid, you were not here that time, so.
I'll just make one note. So on page three of the minutes, at the top, there's a motion to accept total of $7,148 in grants from New Market Community Education Partnership. I would just note that that was as listed. Because the individual grant amounts were broken out in
Yes, they were.
in the documents provided to you. So we're not getting one check, we're getting multiple in those smaller amounts.
I think there were 10 or so different checks. Okay, thank you, Meredith. Any other amendments? All those in favor of approving the minutes as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, abstentions?
I think I abstained because I wasn't present.
Yes, 401, Jen, thank you. We have a couple of personnel matters to discuss. The first is teacher nominations for the 2017-18 school year.
So included in your packet is the list of both probationary and continuing contract teacher nominations for the upcoming school year. And again, this has all been post the evaluation process and the board had the opportunity to discuss these in, on public earlier this evening.
I seek a motion to approve the nominations as listed.
So moved.
Second that.
On a motion from Mr. Zink and a second from Ms. McKenney, any discussion of the nominations? All those in favor accepting them as listed?
Aye.
Approved unanimously. The second thing, the next thing is the special services director nomination. And Meredith, I will ask you for input on that.
Sure. So I am nominating Erica McNeil to serve as the Director of Student Services for the 17, 18, and 18, 19 school years.
Excellent. I seek a motion to approve Meredith's nomination of Erica McNeil for these student services disposition.
Second.
On a motion from Ms. Alberg and a second from Mr. Kennison, any discussion? Yes, ma'am?
No, I was waiting for the opportunity for discussion.
Oh, yes, any discussion?
Welcome aboard.
Can you tell us a little bit?
Yes, yeah. So first, just so people are aware, we had invited parents to serve on the interviewing committee. Shelton served as the board representative to that committee. We had a number of staff from both buildings and a couple of administrative representatives as well. So Erica fared well through that process and she is our recommendation to you. She is currently the Assistant Director of Student Services in the Northwood Nottingham and Stratford District. She has been there since 2009, served in that capacity. So she works with students from preschool through 12th grade, serves as the out-of-district coordinator and the preschool coordinator in that district and manages the transitions for students from one school to the other within that district as well as to Dover High School, which is one of the sending districts for those schools and Co-Brown. She brings a great deal of experience in special education as well as with, working with adolescents in a therapeutic setting. We are excited to bring her on board.
All those in favor accepting the nomination?
Aye.
Approved unanimously. Welcome aboard, Erica. We have a student matter, a request for student policy waiver of policy JFAB. Meredith, will you give us whatever information you can about that?
So again, the board was able to discuss the specifics of this request in non-public. But JFAB is our admission of non-resident students' policy. So we are asking for you to approve the admission, well, essentially waive that policy in order to meet the student need.
So moved.
Second.
On a motion for Mr. Zink with a second from Ms. Alberg, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Al, can you do the manifests for us?
I can. To make a motion to approve the payroll, an AP manifest for 4617, payroll manifest, $510,298.47, accounts payable, $459,911.66, per total of $970,210.13.
A second.
On a motion from Mr. Zink with a second of Mr. Kennison, is there any discussion of the manifests? All those in favor of approval?
Aye.
Let me see. Meredith, is there any reason to go in non-public again?
There is not.
Okay. Our next scheduled meeting is April 20th, 2017. Before that time, we'll try to get some communication out for the information about the financing for the upcoming bond for the facilities. And I seek a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
On a motion from Ms. McKenney and a second from Mr. Kennison, all those in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Aye.